The supplies are void, and that's why I think they would be very good in terms of reacting and being able to respond just because they're really close by. Well, there's we have several that are close by, but but they, you know, they're they're kind of used to they know our our facility. So they they would be able to react quite well. It's it's what I didn't really realize is that that they would be doing anything proactively and from a strategic and planning standpoint.
Got it.
So that was, and I, you know, you know, we can, we could certainly, you know, a lot of these things I we had, I sort of had to make judgment calls based on what we knew at the time. And not sometimes if they didn't respond or they didn't address something, I just gave them a zero.
Yeah, it was tough to know.
If you don't know, you don't know. And and you can't, you can't just guess whether they were good or not. But
I know. That was one thing about IVS comm. I did want to ask specifically about those. And I made a note because your experience with them as a VoIP provider might lead you to either more interested or less interested in them, depending on how your dealings have been thus.
Yeah, I just know it's a fairly small company, you know, and they're and they're thrust is they they've done all of our cabling, and they've done that very well. And they've and they obviously provide us with our VoIP service, both of which they they've been very fairly responsive. If they if we knew that they were going to be able to provide all this this proactive and strategic planning, I would be more inclined to like them. But I don't think that this is, I think this is a second, I don't know, maybe they're trying to get in, get into the business.
Yeah.
That's their main thing, like some of these other companies.
So Jim, maybe just to give them the benefit of the doubt, would you be so kind to just follow up with them with the one question to just clarify if their application is being presented the way Margie first read it, or the way Asmat has read it, that that they're saying we're doing that they only responded to, you know, wrote about what was above and beyond?
I needed more specific question than that. I'm not sure I understand. You mean that they're that they obviously left out a lot of things or said that
Yeah, say, hey, you left out a lot of things.
Right?
Are we to assume that you're speaking only about, you know, about the what we requested plus, or?
Yeah, the the pricing page, page nine seems to me indicated the monthly charge is twenty five hundred for these services and a list, you know, four hours of onsite visits, eight hours of additional on demand visits, etc. Is that how we should interpret this? Or is it like Margie interpreted where it's we do all of these, we will do all of these things in the RFP, plus these additional things?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
Those words.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll have a conversation, see if I can.
Yeah. And page, page three of their executive summary does say IVS comm meets 100% of Cyo Township's key features and requirements. So that's, that's where I, that's like, what? What prime meaning for that? So I guess, yeah, it just feels like some of those things are
Right. Well, key, key features is kind of a
Yeah.
That's kind of like a verb using the word virtually, you know, it's
Five, yeah.
I kind of, I, I look at that both the same, virtually and key says, well, it's whatever our most important things are. So yes, I'll, I'll try and see if I can get a little bit more information out of them on that. The, so it sounds to me, what did as far as NetSmart, how was everybody's sort of, would they be a fine? I, I thought that they would be a clear finalist. I just wanted to see if, if, if everybody sort of agrees or we somebody has concerns there.
Yeah, I liked them a lot. They were one of my top scores, although I have a note here that I didn't see, they didn't mention backup services or Office 365 management in the quote. And I think it's important to you. So
Okay.
We may want clarification there, but
Well, we definitely, if, if, if there's only a few things and they're still a top candidate, we can also, we can, we can get the rest of this information from our, from the the actual interviews.
Yeah.
And that's what I just wanted to sort of narrow this thing down so that we've got, we don't have to interview all every one of these people. If there's some clear, clear winners or clear losers, let's, let's get those identified now and then just get down. So I NetSmart, I think would be a sure bet. And then we, I get the impression everybody would like to talk to Granite.
Yeah. And and I do want to go back to CMIT. I mean, I just had a question for them, like, you know, I have no idea how much these services really should cost, but theirs were, it was like twice, you know, the others.
I'm with you there.
But but I liked everything that they said. So I want to understand why. And if there's any, I want to understand why.
Okay.
Well, and with them, I, I scored them pretty highly, but I took some points off because there were some basic tasks that I thought should be included in the base price that were actually additional costs on top of the base price with them.
Gotcha.
So that again, we, you know, we'd want to look into that a little bit more. But overall, I like them a lot.
They actually answered all the questions.
Yep.
Right. That was, that was kind of nice all by itself is that we, you didn't have to guess or or read
Right.
Different sections. They actually answered everything that we asked.
That's what you asked them to do.
Yes. Right. And to me, I get annoyed even if it's in a different order. I mean, to not just put things in the order
Good to know. Good to know that about you, Jim. Never gonna propose anything to you.
Right. Yeah, put them in the right order. Make, make, make the job easier.
Yeah, like the fact that they were charging, you know, a hundred and five dollars an hour for break fix and installation like that. I thought that's what we're, that should be included in in the cost.
Yes, that should be included, for sure.
So those kind of
And it's already a very expensive onboarding, I say, a thousand dollars to onboard it. And they're pretty, as I say, the, the between, between the dominant system and they're, they're over on Baker Road. So they're super close. They're very close by. And you can see the prices or you can, you sort of get a, an idea of the price. And when I see, when I saw that IVS comm at twenty five hundred, it obviously it makes me a little bit suspicious. Generally, you get what you pay for. And if somebody can do it for so much cheaper, that, that certainly, certainly makes you wonder. And similar, I, I thought the same thing with, with Granite, that they, they could do everything. Essentially, there's the, oh, yeah, we can do it all. And by the way, we can also just do it for thirty eight, you know, thirty eight seventy five per, per month. One of the cheapest, not, not quite as cheap as IVS comm, but but very cheap. So.
I really liked CompuData, because the tools they're suggesting to their use are quality, good tools that I've, that I would recommend. The, you know, using Barracuda, using CrowdStrike for endpoint protection is probably the industry leader right now. It's advanced endpoint protection beyond standard antivirus. So from that perspective, I really like them a lot.
Right.
Not as local, but
I think the SOC was, was the, that was above and beyond, or it wasn't included. I didn't
Right. Yeah, I had that note, too. They didn't seem to talk much about the SOC, which would be able to, I would want to dig in with them, but
And and what I, I think what they, they use this term of a, like a virtual CIO.
Couple of them use
Actually have, they have a, somebody dedicated to the, to, to your particular group or your company. And I got the impression that they didn't, that was one of the things that they didn't have, which is why a lot of the things they could, they didn't provide is like project management, strategy, all these other things that some of the other companies did. You sort of have somebody, and this, I wouldn't have known this if I hadn't been talking with all these different, different companies. And they all talked, at least several of them talked about having someone who's, who is assigned to you, sort of like your, your person. And they go through and they're the ones that would be preparing your budgets for you, deciding which, you know, you know, what, what sort of equipment needs to be replaced that year or the following year, or perhaps even a five year, five year plan. But you want to have somebody there. If you're going to do some, someone like IVS comm, that's more or less just going to be a support contract and be reactive, then you have to have somebody at the township to do that.
Right.
To have somebody that sits down and does your, writes your budgets and, and thinks ahead a little bit rather than, and that was, I think, one of the problems that I had. I, I, I agree completely with you, Asmat. They had some, some really cool equipment for monitoring and security. But I did not get the impression from them that they had any, any sort of a virtual
No, they, they do talk about that in the last couple of pages.
Perhaps I missed, perhaps I missed that part of it, because it wasn't
If you look at like, page ten.
Let me, let me bring up the
Still talking about CompuData?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and the page ten, beginning of page eleven for technology strategy planning, they say it's included in the initial proposal, virtual CIO services are included at no additional fee. Some of their project management, they said would be offered at an hourly rate, but Yeah.
Looking for page numbers.
Right there. Start right there. Yeah. Technology strategy planning, bottom of it.
It says VCIO services are included, no additional fee. Okay. So I guess they did, they did at least address that.
Yeah, but they did, they do have, like you said, project management was an additional fee and their managed stock is a service.
Was an additional fee.
Was an additional fee. So that would be a, something to talk to them about.
The service, this end user security can be added, can be added, added as a, as a price per, per deployment.
And their exclusion doesn't have, well, network vulnerability scanning is what I just, my eye just caught the, just caught my eye in penetration testing. I hadn't noticed that before on page eight, I think, notes and exceptions.
Not included. Okay.
Yeah, that's, I feel like that's weird. You know, vulnerability scanning should be included. That's a basic, you must do that. Penetration testing, I, I can, that's an additional fee, but always. So just scan the network, you know, once a week or once a month and look for vulnerabilities. That should be included in everything.
Yeah.
And I, even though they're out of state and wouldn't have in person support, they wouldn't, there was no mention of onsite support. I think we can adjust to that. I just think that's been a more of a habit. But I do like that there, they seem to be really well established and have a lot of clients. And that, that helps give me confidence that they are gonna, you know, be ahead of the curve and always be using the best technology.
You're, you're referring to CompuData?
Mm hmm.
I, did all of them specify, I feel like it was a mix of responses that specified technologies used and those who didn't. Did, is that sort of everybody's sense, like some of them did and some of them?
Yeah, it was really uneven. Yeah, we could, we could ask for standardization. You know, just kind of list it all out. If, if Margie or Asmat or Jim, you would have some opinions?
You mean as to what, if, if that's what we actually wanted to have was standard, you know?
No, no, of which technologies, like I saw a lot of people talk about, like the, is it the Datto backup solution or others?
Right.
What would you be looking for, Margie or Asmat?
I just wondered, I wasn't sure, because I heard, I thought I heard a few people say that they liked CompuData just because they specified technologies were, that increased our confidence in them. But I was thinking, oh, gosh, I think some of the responses didn't even specify the technology.
Ask Jim to make it up, so I can let these other people in.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't hear you. I, I was off you, but no, I don't know. I don't know why.
Oh, excuse me. Sorry. Excuse me. Kristy just came in the office. She's having some technology problems. Jim, would you please make her the co-host?
Oh, I, I guess I thought she was. I apologize.
Yeah, I think there were, there were, like Granite, for example, said they would do everything but didn't list any of the, you know, how they would do it or what technologies they use. I think a lot of them did that. With CompuData, I just specifically, not only did they list the ones, that, that some of the technologies, but the ones they listed are ones I'm really fond of. So
Okay.
That helped me. But I think, yeah, if we, if we limit it down to ones that, you know, the, the last few finalists, I think we should ask them to be more specific about how they're doing some of these things and what technologies they're using.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Well, so, so anybody have, well, is there any we can name right now? I was, we've got a, we got a bunch of them sort of in, that some people like, other people don't. There's some that, that everybody agrees probably.
Well, well, it looks like ones that we've discussed, maybe having interviews with, but let's, let's go Granite Networks, yes. IVS comm, no. Premier Business, we haven't talked about.
I did not understand the proposal at all.
They were, they were my very, Premier was my very lowest.
Okay. So we're a solid no. CompuData, sounds like a yes for interview?
Yeah, I think so. I think so. Other people feeling the same.
Others?
I gave them a giant mess. So I, like, I could go either way on them. I wasn't like, who, that may sound amazing.
I wasn't, I wasn't impressed with them. But, you know, I don't want to, if, if others feel, feel they have a real, real prospect, and I'm, you know, certainly we can, we could do more than just two or three. It sounds like we've already got three pretty much picked out for as finalists.
Well, Granite, NetSmart, CompuData, are those three?
Uh, no, the CMIT, I think, was the one that we wanted to at least ask them about.
Their price, yeah.
Price was very high, because they were, they came in fairly strong, I, I thought.
Their price is an outlier. So I'm just kind of curious.
It's definitely an outlier. And so it, I mean, it might, might be worthwhile to, to ask, to have them for that. But I know, as I say, I, for CompuData, I had, I had a lot of very low scores in there. And I think that had to do more with, with my, I was not understanding how much of a involvement and proactive they were going to be with this. What they, they actually called a CMIT, I think, is the, the word they used. Asmat, was that what they called it?
The, the, the virtual CIO, the VCIO?
Yeah, virtual, right.
Yeah.
Somebody that, that takes, essentially takes over and, and does all the, the strategic planning.
Right.
Works with, works with people at the, at the office, or at least maybe a key person. But you have to have somebody that really initiates a lot of this stuff. Otherwise, you're, you're, you're going to hire somebody internally that, that knows enough to be able to communicate with them.
But we're going to need to do that anyways.
I do think also NetSmart Plus had that ingredient. Several of them offered, I think, that service that included in their price. So, yeah, that, that should
That was kind of what I looked at first, was that, that particular taking on that role and taking it seriously. They, that somebody that would communicate with you on a regular basis as to how are things going? And if you've had any problems, anything we need to look at?
And, and Code Red was a no for me.
Yep, they were, they were a definite no.
That was my, I didn't even, I didn't even score them.
I, I started and then I stopped.
Yeah.
Yeah, they had a misspelled word throughout, so I kind of dropped it.
I do that a lot. Yeah, they basically wanted you to pay like almost a thousand dollars a month just for the privilege of having, of being their customer. And then everything else was another additional charge on top of that. I was like
Right.
And Dominant Systems, I just want to acknowledge, it's our one Cyo Township business. So I was happy to see a local applicant. IVS comm is also fairly nearby. But Dominant Systems, I was a definite no. They just seemed to not be able to respond to all of our requirements.
Yeah, yeah, they just, I think they lack the, the knowledge and capability to do what you need.
I agree.
And I, when I spoke with them, it sounded like a very small organization. I mean, they would probably do their best to try and keep it going, but I didn't get the impression they had the, the breadth of resource that, that some of these other companies had. You don't have, if you've only got a handful of people in your company and you don't have all these backup resources, you're kind of stuck.
Yeah.
Who?
So do, so do we want to go with NetSmart, Granite, CompuData, and CMIT, all four? Or do you want to use those questions to, CompuData and CMIT to sort of, sort of evaluate them further before including them for an interview?
I don't know if we could really, we'll, we'll be able to even make that analysis until, until we interview them.
So you would include them, then?
Yeah, if we want to have all, if we want to have four interviews, then, you know, if we really, if we really like those four, then, then we should probably have four interviews. Says, I was trying to keep the, this, that last meeting on, what's, when is that one happening? I didn't want it to get to be too long, that's why.
Well, Jim, I don't know if you've had any
July, July eighth, yes.
July eighth.
That was the, the meeting when we were gonna, it, maybe do some of these interviews. And
Eleven to twelve?
Four of them, that's going to be a rather lengthy meeting.
Well, I wonder, I mean, it sounds like we want some kind of evaluation of a couple of points for each of the four of these. And so I, what I wouldn't want to do is have, you know, a thirty or forty five minute presentation from each of them. What I would like to do is have more of a, you know, ten to fifteen minute conversation with them.
And yes, some, some direct questions and answers. We don't need to see the, the dog and pony show.
Yeah. I wonder if we could structure it as a conversation, you know?
I agree. I'm with you there.
Do and a with the committee?
Yeah, I mean, even, even with that, if we, if we lengthen them, I think we had that scheduled for about an hour is, is, can you all look at your schedules and see what, we were to lengthen that a little bit? Would, I think, as I say, I believe I had that scheduled for an hour. Oh, yeah, it's from at eleven o'clock to twelve. You can all check your schedules just to see if we need, if we do go over, would that be feasible? And then we could probably get all four in with a, with a very targeted question and answer. So that, so that at least we can, we can get some of these important questions answered, especially with Granite, who, you know, you don't, we don't, I don't know anything about them.
Are we asking the same questions of all four candidates?
I, well
No, I don't think so. No.
No? Okay.
Because there are just some things that, I mean, for instance, Granite, I would, you know, the first question that would be like, are you guys for real? I mean, you just said, yeah, we
Jim has trust issues.
Perhaps, yes. And I don't like things being in the wrong order either, apparently. But yeah.
That's why you're our assessor.
Right. I guess you wanted to assess a little, just a little bit particular.
Just thinking, that's a pretty aggressive first question out of the box.
Are you for real? Okay, so we'll have
If we could, if we, if people are free, if we could do two hours and just schedule a half hour for each one, I think that would, trying to fit them in a fifteen minutes might be pushing it.
Well, I was thinking, we, we do want to have some time afterwards to, because, because eventually at that same meeting, we do want to come up with a recommendation for the board. So we want to have a little bit of time left over that we can, we can chat and get, at least come to a consensus.
Sure.
Do you think eleven to one?
Yeah, I, I would say so. Maybe so, maybe plan on, maybe twenty minutes a pop, pet twenty minutes per, and then that'll leave us, you know?
Or so, yeah.
Yeah. I, that would leave us an hour and a little bit of time in between. If we allow some time in between, then we can, we can do that. But
And I'd wondered, too, in addition to the specific questions we have about each, also just, you know, areas where they didn't were responsive, like, and I think they may, these may have been questions we added after the RFP. But for example, does the company provide insurance for cybersecurity liability for itself, password security, social considerations, customer satisfaction?
Mm hmm. Yeah, and I'll, I'll leave, leave it to someone else to, to, to write the proper question to come up with, to, to pull that information out. I don't know exactly. I guess you could just ask them, would, you know, there, if all else is the same, why would we pick you from a social standpoint? Is that what you're thinking? I know, I know, Margie, that was sort of your, your question.
Yeah, and it might not be important. It was really more like, does the township have any sort of policies or other things that guide, or does it, I don't know if there's anything that was important to consider from that aspect.
Yeah. You know, Margie, we are so small in our procurement policy, the only policy we, the only values based thing we have built in is a local preference. But beyond that, we haven't built it out. That said, I think there's, you know, consensus that, you know, any kind of contribution to the social good is, is worth something in the scoring, for sure.
Yeah. And I would, I would say that's important. If, if, if you've got literally a tie, you can't decide between them, then you, seems like that's when you would want some of those, you know, a little bit more qualitative things like that. And I'm totally in agreement.
Yeah. And I think a couple of the questions, you know, on insurance for cybersecurity liability and the password security, we should ask all of the companies, because
Yes.
unless
Several of them, several of them had actually put it in there.
Okay.
I'm guessing we're going to find that every one of them has that. I mean, I think, I think, I don't think it would be prudent to even be in business these days without, without some pretty decent liability insurance. And especially if you're in the IT business, I just couldn't even begin to imagine having a business like that and you don't have a pretty good policy to, insurance policy to make sure that you're, at least you're not liable for. They may not be liable for what happens if, you know, somebody internally clicks on a link and, but, but you can also, if they're doing our backups for us, we could actually be, something could, could come from them, from whoever the provider is. And that's, that's, that would be on them. So, so you do want to have, I, I think they would need to be protected in that regard.
I wonder if there are a few things that we could ask them all to provide in advance of this next meeting. One being like their certificate, their liability policies. I know a couple of them provided it off the bat as part of their proposal, but they could all send it, the four of them could send it to us. Also, like the tech technologies that they use for the various parts of the proposal, they should all be able to respond and kind of let us know which products they're using or how they accomplish this, I think.
Are you referring to more of the security end of things or the, the
Yeah.
The security seems to be a, a big deal.
Yeah.
Sure that we all know the quality. And Asmat, I know you would, you would probably have the best, the best information as to what really the, the latest and greatest technologies are for technology monitoring and vulnerability testing. So, so, and was, were you, were you thinking more of the network monitoring, Margie, or were you thinking something?
I'm thinking kind of the whole picture. So whatever they're using, even if they're, whatever they're using for like, some of them specified, well, I guess it doesn't matter. The point is sort of, I think Asmat said, like, because Docu, CompuData had submitted the names of some products they were using, built our confidence a little bit in what they were doing.
Oh, I see. So I'll look at net, I'll look at CompuData and see what they did. And then I'll, I'll, maybe I'll see if I can come up with a question that's sort of, and they can even include links to the, the specific technologies and, at least, at least some of us can, you know, it may be, it may be above my head, but Margie, you and Asmat probably would know, know this stuff.
Margie's question was sort of where, where I was headed, too. And that is, you know, how much of, of this next step can we sort of make uniform for the four finalists and have them respond to kind of a list in advance and, and then save time for kind of follow up questions during that interview?
I agree. One of them being insurance, at least have a very specific question and so that they can all answer that the same way. And then also, as well to identify whatever third party technology you're using for monitoring, both security and, and network monitoring.
Yeah.
That I think those two are, are That I think those two are, and they should be able to, to respond, whether we wait for them to respond ahead of time or, or until the meeting or ahead of time, doesn't really matter, but they should be prepared to have those answers to those questions. In fact, I think the technology, we should ask them to send those to us. So we can sort of, you know.
Review and if we have.
Before we go to the meeting, and then we can ask additional questions about it at that time.
Okay. I think that I would also, they should be able to answer in advance how they store client passwords. That'd be a pretty easy thing to answer in advance. And several of that did specify that you have to hand the over passwords to them, but then they don't talk about what they do with them. And then they should, I also would be interested, there were very few that I got a sense of how much is actually subcontracted out to other providers. So if we're really interested in that, we might want to ask that in advance.
Yeah, it was hard to evaluate that scoring point, you know, the.
That's the one that I was looking at really most of all. How much of it, I got the impression that, that, the, the one company was almost, he was like a one man show. I can't remember which one it was, but he, he had, he subcontracted almost everything out. So he, he had a, a group of, kind of a table of all these contractors, subcontractors that he would call. I guess, I don't know what happens if he can't answer two calls at once. He probably has a few people. But I got the impression that some of these, especially the, the, the ones that are franchises of national companies, they have good and bad. It's nice to have these franchises with, you know, ten thousand people involved, as long as they, they all know who the, who's the expert in one particular technology. They, they have all these resources available.
Yeah, I kind of liked that model. I'm not.
It is, it's kind of an interesting model. It's, it's just a little bit scary that to have and I say, it's good and bad. It's, it has its.
I'm going back to your trust issues, Jim.
Right, right. So I've got, yeah, we'll check the insurance. I will put, formulate a question for password security. Security monitoring, network monitoring. I think those are the, those we all want to know. Is there anything else I, I can put, and I'll, I'll send these out to everybody and make sure if, if anybody wants to wordsmith a question to be more specific, then we can do that before I send them out. But I've got four so far. Insurance, the password, the security monitoring and the network monitoring. And we want to know the, for those, the monitoring, that we want to really know the specific technologies that they're using for those. From, for at least from the few that, that brought it up while they were, while they were touring our facility, it seemed like sounds like a lot of them have actually little agents they install on the machines. So that they're constantly talking to their, to the mothership.
Yep.
And it would identify if something is running awry or a pending failure of some equipment or software. So I think that's, I think that if, if they don't have some agents, in fact, I'm going to specify that about agents too.
And Jim, Andy showed me, could you describe for the committee briefly the, the backup server that's at the fire station? That they, because all the construction is happening around.
Oh, yeah.
This physical server.
All that is, is a physical server that sits in a room over there right now, getting a little, it's scary that it's getting a little dusty. But that's actually a secondary server that we use for, to back up our backups.
Okay, to have it in a separate location.
We back up in, in-house and we back up to the cloud. In addition to that, then we back up, we take our backups and we copy those over to the fire station. So if, if, for instance, SciO Township Hall was leveled.
Yeah.
We would, you could get all your backups from over there, between that and the cloud. The cloud is, is all of our most valuable data, is all back up to the cloud. And so, yes, we do have, we do have backups at, at three locations. Which is, I guess you'd consider that to be the best practices. And all these places, I got the impression that most of them have, they, they either put some kind of a, of a device at your location which takes a, an image of every disk every night. Which makes it very, if you literally have a snapshot of the entire, an entire server and it crashes, you can, if you have a brand new server, you can have that up and running as soon as you get the, a new physical server in place. So that's what typically what they do is they're just constantly imaging all of your data. It requires huge, huge data, and then it syncs it with, synchronizes it into the cloud. So most of them, I, I considered what they were doing probably more robust than what we have right now. Because they have those resources for these giant.
Support button.
Yeah, they can, it can support that kind of a backup where just, you know, me having to monitor backups and make sure it's, it's replicating over to, to the fire station. That's, you know, we're, we're doing it, the job, but it's, it's certainly not what I would expect out of an IT professional company. Okay, well, hey, that, this is good. I think we've got, I've got four that we're going to invite and, and some questions to ask. Before I send any of these things off, if any, if anybody thinks of some other questions that I should send out, some standard questions, just let me know and maybe I'll do it early next week. And I'll let them know that they're finalists.
Also, communicate with the, the folks who we're not inviting to interview.
Yes, yep, I will do that for sure.
Jim, I had just had one other question. I think you probably talked about it the last meeting and I wasn't at, but the township servers, those are all like MS servers or Windows or something?
Yes, yes, they are.
Oh, they're, okay.
If we don't, we have no, we don't have any, any Linux or Unix or any other operating systems. It's, everything is Windows based. We should, okay, and some of those are, most of those are virtual servers.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anything else? Comments?
You know, Jim, I would be, I want to make sure we allow time for public comments since this was publicly posted. There, we do have some members of the public. They might be some of the proposal applicants on here too, I'm not sure.
Well, I will let, I will let, let you and Will then go through that particular process.
Sure, if somebody would like to raise their hand and Jim, if you can just, I'll call on them, but Jim, you have the host funk. You are a host and I am not. So Pam Boyd has her hand up. Pam?
Good afternoon. It hasn't, I find it humorous that I had such a hard time getting into this IT meeting. Took me over a half hour, so I've missed a lot. My apologies. My question, and maybe you've discussed it, is are they confident in any of these people you're interviewing that their company will not have hacking problems like recently has happened? Is there any question like that in your litany of questions? That seems to be a very public issue lately. And I know some of these hackers will attack schools and smaller entities like the, like the township, because usually they don't have great support and are more willing to pay. So that's my question.
Great. Let me see if there's other public comment. Then if we have a moment, I might ask Ozma to give kind of an overview of the general issue.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, Ozma, could you share a little bit about the issue?
Sure. So I think Pam, you're referring mostly to ransomware attacks that have probably been in the news with the pipeline recently and meat processing and things like that. And I, I totally agree with you. Schools are huge targets and local small governments are targets as well. So one of the things we're looking for in this proposal is what we're calling managed SOC, so Security Operations Center, where we're looking for an organization that has the capability to not only react when something bad happens, but also monitor and prevent things from happening in the first place. So there were questions in the RFP asking for that. Some of these answers, some of them answered them pretty well. Some, we have some questions about it. I think that's what we'll be following up on. So we're, that's, that's one component of what we're looking for, you know, being able to prevent those things from happening as well as support us if they happen. And then one of the questions that we talked about adding was, for this next round, is specifically on their practices, how are they within their systems preventing things from, from going bad? So if we're, you know, if they need access to our passwords to be able to support our systems, how are they protecting those within their systems? That's one of the questions we're adding to this next round.
Awesome, thank you.
Sure.
We also have the question about cybersecurity liability insurance for them, but also frankly for the township. So that's something, we have our, our, it's the particip, it's the MTPP, it's through the Michigan Townships Association, is how we have our overarching insurance policy for the township. And last year, we did not opt in to pay more for cybersecurity liability insurance. So that's something we'll look at and see what comes with that. And, and I've asked Ozma and Margie and Jim to, to kind of help us with that this fall, take a look at it and see if the value is worth the cost.
Yes, I, I would say, you know, unless it's prohibitively expensive, that's, that would be a no brainer from, probably for, for, for me to have that, but, but we'd have to see what, what the rider cost was. But at least from what I'm hearing from Ozma is the technology for these, these hackers and the ransomwares has gotten way more difficult or way more, more complex. But you can't just protect it necessarily from a, from a backup. So you do need some pretty, you need just your, your basic protection for those things.
And, and to put our residents hopefully abidities, things such as the qualified voter file is hosted by the state. Our assessing tax information is hosted by BSNA. So most of the most ultimately most important data is hosted outside of the township server.
Yep, yep, it most certainly is. Some of the stuff that, that's going to probably, that would be the worst to lose or to have into public hands, yes.
Okay. Jim, anything else?
Nope, I think that's it. I think I'll get, I'll put together some questions that, and I'll just, I'll shoot them around everybody and they can, if you see anything that you want to wordsmith it or something else comes to mind, we'll get together a list of questions and have them respond ahead of time. And then, and then I'll get these things scheduled for our meeting on eighth, was it? Yep, yep, for eight o'clock. And we're going to lengthen that to be a two hour meeting so that we can interview all these folks.
Great. And Jim?
Something at the meeting on July, says, my hope is that we can get something to the, to the meeting on July thirteenth. Is that your, your regular scheduled meeting? Okay. And I purposely kind of pushed it to that, just in case there was something that came up at the board level. And we, we still would have one more meeting before August, because that's sort of, we want to have a contract signed by August first. To get, to allow ample time for good onboarding. Make sure before, before I walk out the door that, that this is well in hand and we don't have questions. So that's our target, is to have a contract in place by August first. We, we can either have the board approve it at their thirteenth, or would it be the twenty seventh? Is that the second meeting? So one of those two meetings, preferably the thirteenth, to, just to give them a little advanced warning that they better get ramped up. So, very good. Thank you, everybody.
Great.
Appreciate all your hard work and good input.
Thank you, everybody. Good to see you all.
Okay, yep, take care now.
Bye.